Welcome to the Town of Acton Planning Board Meeting for November twenty first, two thousand and twenty-four at six P M. I'll stand for the pledge.
Alleged allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Designate Andrew for alternate. Uh, ready to get a chance in a minute?
I'll make a motion that, uh, we accept the minutes dated in room seven. As written.
Second.
On the paper? On both? Alright, I guess start with goal business, uh, Acton Solar LLC, San Page Road, tax map two, three, four, lot zero, four, four. Site plan review extension request.
Hey, everyone. Um, I know we submitted a letter on November sixth, Chris, I don't know if you've received that already. Um, you know, we'd like to request an exemption, an extension, excuse me, of our approval that was given to us last December. And we'd like to request twelve months of an extension. You know, my client is working through, um, some funding and an application for that, so they just need a little bit more time to get that. And then get started on construction and plan for construction.
So I think at the top, um, we can do six months. I don't know if the board has the ability to do twelve months at once, but our ordinance allows two six-month extensions. So we might have, you might come back after the six months, uh, and do it again. Um, if no, nothing has happened.
Okay, that makes sense. I know my client requested to do twelve, even though I advised him that six needs sense to do.
Uh, just following our ordinance, we can do the six at one time if the board decides to go that route, um, and approves it. But, um, six would be what we're gonna do tonight.
Okay.
Uh, issues with the six?
What?
I don't have any issues with the six. Nothing's changed. Um, so, uh, I'm assuming they're just, everything's the same and you're just looking for more time.
That's right. That's right. Looking for more time. I know this will be self-funded mass. They need more to wait to do so.
Uh, I'll make a motion that we accept the six-month extension, um, for the Acton Solar, um, site plan review, extension, permit, extension.
Second.
I'd like to have a little discussion just quickly.
Sure.
Um, I just, I passed out a handout, just, uh, talk about the, uh, constituents of solar panels and I was hoping to ask again, like I did at the previous meeting, if the applicants were willing to do a soil test on the site before the construction was started to see what the, uh, soil was like before the panels were put in and then resultantly after the panels were removed, we at least had the opportunity to do it on the soil test to see if, anything changed, um, during the life of the property.
I know we had talked at the very end of our review last year that we didn't think that was required. Um, I don't think that that ever came up into our conditions. So I don't think that that's on the table to add right now. Um, our client is going through an environmental funding process where they do need to go through another rigorous application process, so there is a lot more environmental review happening for the property. And so that might be, you know, um, something that's good to hear. I don't know if there's any soils tests that's happening. I just don't think that that needs to be discussed at this time. But I'd like to hear from everybody else to see what they think about that.
Can my office get a copy of the final report or something like that? For your environmental studies or whatever it is?
The grant application or like the approved grant or?
Not even the grant, uh, if there's a, if they do any kind of studies or anything of soil. I mean, you said a environmental, what did you say?
So they're going after a, um, a USDA Rural Energy of America program grant for, um, renewable energy projects. And so that is through NEPA, the National Environmental Policy Act. And they do require, you know, some additional, um, environmental reviews. Very similar to what we already went through with you guys and with the D E P. Um, so they're doing a re-review of all of that. I don't know if it's much more additional. There, it seems like it's a lot more rigorous. I haven't gotten a view of that. I know, um, that's all the client has told me at this time.
So when all that stuff comes in, can we get briefed on the, the results, uh, or exact, uh, any of the findings or any of the requirements or any of the, you know, everything that's going to be done out on the site in accordance with the USDA requirements?
Yeah, I can see if or if I would provide any of those documents.
Basically, and it'll give us a baseline for those procedures moving forward, uh, as well. And then in that time, could you just talk to the client about possibly soil samples in within, uh, in, within this, the timeframe of the six-month extension? If it's feasible to work into that point, to give us that baseline idea of what's happening. So that when we come back to that site, probably long after I'm on this board, uh, someone else can, can look at that and see if there's any difference or change. And we can, we can kind of assess it.
I can talk to them about that.
Yeah, just to see what they, what they, I think that's a reasonable idea.
Yeah, I know I just passed the sound. Probably people haven't had a chance to review it, but, um, you know, just it addresses some, you know, some of the, um, potential components that, uh, may reach from the panels during the life of the array and, um, just a simple soil test at the beginning of the project would, would give us, like Andrew said, a baseline to, um, work with later on. Cause, you know, later on, if there was some sort of issue, we wouldn't really know because we wouldn't know what the soils were like before the array was installed.
That's understandable.
Sure. It'll be good too, because obviously these technologies are rapidly, rapidly evolving. You know, the, the panels that we had, that they're putting up now are vastly different than the panels that were put up twenty years ago. And, and I expect that to continue to move over time, so.
Yeah, I just feel like it would be, that this sort of information that was, you know, recorded would, would help the technology, you know, through dawn. It would be a beneficial thing for everyone. It's just a, um, simple twenty-dollar soil test.
I'll have to see if that's feasible. I know we went through this conversation previously. We found through other studies that it shouldn't be a problem based on, um, the components of the system and the gradable, um, components of that. And, and I was reading really quickly, um, about how it talks about, you know, how these systems, you know, become waste. They completely get taken down and recycled. So it is a little bit discouraging just to see this and then talk about this again when we're just requesting a small extension.
Oh, I mean, no way trying to encumber the project. I think it's a fantastic project. This is more for the broader scope of these arrays throughout the town of Acton and throughout the region of what the implications of using farmland for this use for only a short twenty-year to thirty, forty-year time period is. And, you know, it's, it's, it's really just to record what happened, not to, uh, you know, not trying to affect the project at all. So, um, I don't know if anyone else has time to, to review the, the document I provided. It's just a page and a half of information about solar panels.
I skimmed it, but I have a little cut.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. I know, I should, I didn't even realize we were, uh, addressing this at this meeting until last meeting, so.
So I think if we come back to request another six-month extension, we'll come back and talk to you all again. I'm not sure if we need to have any sort of results or any sort of other discussions at that time. Um, I didn't compare it with any of that.
And he's just, he's just asking. He's not requesting.
Yeah, he's just having a conversation with you.
Yeah, so it's not, it's not a, hey, you have to do this. It's like, hey, would you consider? It's, it's not a request.
Especially cause I, I know he just handed you the, the papers. I know he just handed you the paper as well, so. I mean, you could go Google the author of it and see where it's coming from.
Yeah, by no means is it saying you have to do this. He's just asking, you know, like it.
Yeah.
Okay.
I second that as much.
You did second?
I second.
Alright, all in favor of bringing in six months? All opposed? See you in six months.
Okay. There we go. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
You too. Alright, next up is Phil Grove, one-one-nine-six, West Shore Drive, tax map one-two-three, lot zero-one-five. Activation for greatest practical expense, and Tyler.
So no, Chris wasn't able to make it. Um, the board did most, every other member was able to, uh, be present at a sidewalk for this one. And I don't know if they want to discuss what they found, saw on the sidewalk.
Yeah, I don't know what anybody else saw. I don't see, um, kind of confirmed what we talked about last time with respect to, uh, not really seeing anything encumbering moving the, uh, project back to the, behind the hundred-foot line, basically where that, that shed is. And even with that, that other house that immediately, that's immediately adjacent to it, um, that looked like it was in relatively the same spot, so unless somebody saw something different.
I would agree. Um, you know, obviously you have to, uh, stay with, you know, within the, uh, out of the power line, uh, right away, but, uh, I still think it's very doable.
Yeah, and I think, uh, it, you know, it would come down basically to within the twenty percent, right? Like the twenty percent block coverage, like a new build would, would come down into the twenty percent block coverage. Cause it's not, it's not, we're not expanding a current building to use a thirty percent. We're building a new building to be, uh, to take up the twenty percent block coverage, right? Uh, which I think is, uh, what, twenty-seven? It's on there. It's in there. But yeah, but that would alleviate having to take out all those trees, um, that are right there, which I think on a slope as steep as that provide quite a bit of, uh, protection against erosion and all that other kind of stuff. I, I mean, barring something, something else, something really, you know, telling, I'm, I'm kind of in favor of, you know, having a, having to move back behind, behind a hundred and into whatever dimensions that means.
Yeah, I mean, I feel like there, there is room between the hundred and the fifty-foot setback from the center of the deed-in right away. And it would be sitting on top of some of the impervious that's already existing. So I feel like it would be an improvement, improvement of the law and it would, it would go with the, the character of the neighborhood. Like Andrew was saying, the, the neighboring houses, that is, is a, you know, similar position.
It might be a few feet less than a hundred.
Yeah, I was gonna say, what if you went to the ease B, C and P easement?
Yeah.
That way.
There might be a few feet.
Pretty much.
A little bit less than a hundred.
No, you're gonna get a five, five feet or so, I thought I would say. I don't know. I'm just, you know.
So this, this, this line right here is the C and P.
The colored line.
There's a small arch of the, the large.
Over orange, the orange line is C and P.
Yeah, so if you put the house up there, there's potential, you know, a few feet, five feet maybe max, um, to use. Which you get in just a little bit inside, but still.
So the orange is the fifteen feet off of the?
Yes.
Okay. It's pretty, pretty similar to a hundred.
It is.
Yeah.
Totally back there too would shorten up the driveway, which would make it easier to fall into that twenty percent block coverage as well. Since the driveway is kind of in that calculation, right? That big round, that, that big rounded thing is part of this, this calculation, right? And so that would obviously, so we, yeah, so if we put it back here, it'd obviously shorten this up and make it much easier. You wouldn't have to shrink the house quite as much. It would be the exception of having to conform to within the size limits here, but, um, but we would still get, uh, basically a bit closer to conformity based on having to shrink this. There. Are we on second?
I think so.
Are we on second?
Yeah.
Okay.
Alright, I'll make a motion that the house of Philip and Darlene Grove, eleven, have located eleven-nine-six West Shore Drive, tax map one-twenty-three, lot fifteen, be relocated behind the, uh, C and P corridor. That's, that's pretty much the whole, whole motion, as much behind the hundred as possible, which is, I'd say, I'd say it is possible to have it a hun, you know, behind the hundred, but if it's behind the, the C and P corridor, we're, we're gonna be, uh, happy.
Between the C, C and P corridor and West Shore Drive?
Yeah, obviously the fifty-foot setback from the center of the legal right ways is the rear limiting factor of the building.
I'd say it's probably in twenty percent block coverage.
You want to have a condition about the block coverage?
Yeah, so it's not, uh, it's varying out to twenty-seven percent, but I think twenty percent.
We're looking with the condition that, uh, the block coverage of the site be reduced to the twenty percent, uh, required by the ordinance.
I'll second that. On the paper? On the floor? Alright.
Any other conditions that anyone? These, I'd like to, you know, obviously see the, well, that the, um, you know, the existing location of the house, the, oh, revegetated. I don't know if anybody feels like we should.
Well, they got twenty percent block coverage. It's allowed that, so. You got, you hit, that's near max you can, you can do, so, I mean, you can revegetate it, but.
I just didn't know if we, uh, the board was, would like a revegetation plan for that, um, section of the lot, given that it's a fairly large, you know, maybe along with the, the, you know, the calculation for the twenty percent to get a, a revegetation plan that, you know, encompasses the front half of the lot.
My folks do that.
Yeah.
Can I just provide a revegetation plan with the permit to the code?
Yeah.
I have to do that anyways.
Yeah, yeah, sounds good.
Alright, uh, next up is Jim Yoshizawa, seven-two-four, lot, uh, thirteen, three.
Who's, who's seconded that though?
Tax map one-four-two, lot zero-twenty-nine. Guys went to a notice plate loss?
Yeah.
For this one?
Yeah.
At this one, we did provide, uh, I think you asked for the old minutes, or did I give them to you last time too?
No.
Just this time. This time. So there are other old minutes, uh, when they came about the money board in twenty fifteen. And they, yeah, there's not much description to them, but what they did approve was that it was rebuilt on the existing, uh, block foundation because they were proposing to just reuse that foundation.
Were there revisions to the ordinances since twenty fifteen?
Not in that sense, yeah. I think, you know, just in hindsight, I'm only thinking that they, you know, by reusing the same foundation and they just weren't, wasn't, they weren't gonna impact the area any more than what was already there.
Yeah.
So. But I wasn't there, so I don't know. Kevin was.
Mm-hmm. Maybe nine years ago.
So Chris, a recap for you. Um, behind the house is about three feet. Um, there's a retaining wall at that three-foot mark, just over the three-foot mark. Pre-succumbent retaining wall, uh, timber ties, whatever it is. Uh, large, uh, bit sloping hill up to the landing spot where the pavement is. Pavement has a flat spot. Then there's, I think it goes from the landing spot or where the pavement parking is. It goes uphill for the driveway where the, um, where the vegetation and the trees are, there's a large, steep, large, steep hill that goes up. And, uh, as you can see on the top of the, the hill, utility lines are servicing tubes, both the bonding lines. Just, cause you went there, just to give you a quick little recap.
That's funny what it says in the minutes. Do you read what it says? Says applying to demolish existing structure, rebuild on existing foundation. Motion was made by Ms. Donnell, seconded by Mr. Smith, a table considerations application until the site is accessible. Cause board members, any more information about the law?
There's two, there's two sets of minutes there.
That's the first.
Oh, might be, yeah.
Yeah.
It was winter time. I think it was, was it February?
Yeah. So they basically just rebuilt in the same location, given the, with a
They didn't do anything.
Same size structure.
I was gonna say.
They did, they didn't, they, they scratched the whole project.
They didn't end up doing it.
Yeah.
And what's the difference between this and what's being proposed?
They're proposing to take out the foundation.
Yeah, they're starting from scratch again.
From scratch.
From scratch.
Yeah, new foundation.
So that, so not on the existing foundation, completely from scratch.
Right, yeah. Tear down, demolish, rebuild.
Make a challenge, dripping, dripping all that.
You said fire coach?
Hmm?
Did you? Oh, yeah.
It's not even relevant as well.
No, but it's worth reviewing since it was demolished. Since it there, we might as well look at it, right?
It's a piece of paper.
Yeah, something happened.
Well, I guess the same issue on this one is, um, moving it back up the hill. Can you do the, the further what?
Wait. Is the, is the hundred-foot line depicted on one of these diagrams?
Uh, so they, you know, building envelope, so the, the hundred foot is within that building envelope, there's a hatch box.
So this line is right in the middle of, so it's front to hundred, and this is the front to hundred. Got it, got it, got it, got it. And that's super, that's super convenient, like the line. Yeah, I guess, so, yeah, that's right here. They are probably down here.
Do they, do they have like?
Oh, it's just. Yeah.
It's, it can be done. And then you got some new blocks, same with each one.
Right, it's one of the six we can drop. One area.
This, this dial line, this is the building envelope. I think it's, it'd lose speed up here. If they're standing that same size, it would fit. Mr. Chairman, my, my two cents worth is that where this is gonna be a complete tear down, um, I don't feel that, um, moving it back from three-point-two feet to six-point-two feet is adequate. I think it needs to be moved back further. Not necessarily, um, a hundred foot, because then we run in, you run into some other issues with the power line easements, so on. But I think there is, uh, I think there is room there, um, to get it much further back.
Yeah, I would agree. Inside the, in, inside the building envelope, but, uh, north south.
So the building envelope was, was on top of that hill?
Yep.
Yeah.
On the hill.
Yep. Yeah, I'm, I'm tracking. Need that compass rose on here.
What are your thoughts on back of the house? Back of the, so coming back like twenty-five feet, so back of the house is kind of this end of the pavement.
I almost feel like the, the building envelope depicted has some constraints in it, given the septic and the power line. Like this, this, this building. Like this, this, this building envelope we have is.
Yeah, I don't think, that's what he was saying.
Yeah, I, that's not, that's not.
I think they.
It's within the constraints, yeah.
The way to make it so it's not impacting it as much is paved with the, the land of the parking area.
Yeah, I think where it's, on this drawing here, where the word pavement is.
Yeah.
Is approximately where the building should go.
I would agree.
Yeah.
Okay. Then we don't have to dig up the hill as much. We, we reduce the.
Do you happen to have a measurement in that block part?
No, could we call, you guys be okay with calling, so the pavement closest to the water has the start of the house, so it's start of the pavement, kind of what he's saying, basically it goes the whole, that, that area? Is that right? Yeah, so like, can you draw on that?
Yep. I would like to get a distance from the water to, to have in motion, that's really critical in this situation. Because we don't have them. The other one we had, the C M P, this, it's real small. The C M P corridor, that's a constraint.
It's so, it's so, you're gonna go back a ways to take a lot out to make it, no, it's dangerous.
I think, I think getting it up, at least up there on that flat, I think that would make a huge difference, yeah.
So I, I was just curious if I could call, you know, kind of, that, and get Joe to give us that distance and call that the number.
I think the exception needs to be in accordance, basically, with the restrictions of the, the power line.
Correct.
I think, I think the restriction has, that way it's not, it's not a random exception. It's an, it's an exception in accordance with a, uh, like a mandate, a mandated restriction based off, based off the power line, based off infrastructure.
Yep.
Not, not an arbitrary one to, in order to try to keep it as close, close to the water as possible.
Correct.
Everybody picking up what I put down here?
So you want, um, to get that fifteen foot easement on the C M P line?
Yeah, basically, probably, I'd like, I'd like to see where the, um, like the hill, like the, there's a retaining wall. I'd like to see where that retaining wall is and like the distance, you know what I'm saying? So we know like, all right, at what point are we cutting into the hill? At what point are we, you know, you know what I mean?
If you put it on the driveway. Can we pull this thing up?
I don't think it shows it.
Can we pull it up on Google Earth or something and get a?
Google Earth won't show you, um, the layout of that, and it'll just show you.
No, this is. We can't, we can't, we can't. Get a, uh. This image that shows the driveway?
Not Google Earth, that's, that's heavily wooded. Yeah.
So it'll show parking area?
I don't actually get anything for the driveway parking area.
What do you?
He's pretty much standing where it is, I would say.
Well, it's not a picture so much as like if we had a, uh, a map of the property that we could.
Get a distance?
Get, yeah, get, achieve a, achieve a distance, even if it's, you know, within a couple of feet.
This will be Google Earth, pretty much is what you would see. Oh.
Let me get some stuff off of here. Yeah, so it's just still blurry. This is the lot here.
So the, so the building, the, the lake side of the building envelope is the hundred foot line?
Yeah.
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 So what if we use that as our reference? Cause we could almost push the back of the building to the hundred foot line and it would still be within parking area, correct? Or the pavement area now. So, and the dimension of the house is, the house is, um.
Sixty feet.
The house is sixty feet?
No, I just wanted to be closer to the water.
There's no way, we're, we're, we need the dimensions of the building.
Give me a second, yeah, I'm getting that. Eighteen, four, and four. Twenty-six, twenty-six.
Twenty-six, yeah.
So twenty-six wide and?
Twenty-six deep.
Well, twenty-five plus the, um, that funny overhang? The three feet of the. Like if you went around to the front, there was the.
Do you just want me to come back with some different measurements? So we're not kind of guessing?
Sure, that works.
Yeah, cause, yeah, cause it looks like the eighteen's are the tops, right? And like the deck is included there?
There's like a, above the second story deck, there's like the, if you went around to the front, there was, um, I think that was almost what come.
It's twenty-six feet from water to the depth. If you set that thing though, back of the house at the hundred, you're getting to that hill both on your neighbor's side and tremendously towards your septic. I honestly think that's a little too far.
Right.
My opinion, but.
Right, that's, I'm, I'm, I'm going for where, where the word pavement is on the drawing.
I drew it kind of on his, kind of where I was thinking it would make the most sense.
Oh, um, well, if you could come up with some.
I just need to know what you guys want, so we can have what you need next time.
I, I guess, I'd like to see the, the, uh, back of the house. Uh, approximately about eighty feet from the water, and if you could just scale that up and give us some dimensions, then we could have something going.
Coming back again, like, right, it's, it's fifteen feet from the electrical line, right?
Which, you, you saw. You're looking at this.
Yep, yep, that's what I'm looking at, fifteen feet. So I would like, so I, I would like horizontal, uh, vertical and horizontal distances, basically, from, uh, that, uh, what is that, southern?
Draw something on his, on his document, so he can go back to the surveyor.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, that southeast, yeah, basically that southeastern point. So from this point, basically, like, the fifteen foot envelope, like, from here, so and then over, and then this is all retaining, this is retaining, and then this is all hill right here, yeah?
Yeah, you mean retaining wall, hill, whatever, I think.
Yep, yeah, right here, yeah, exactly.
So you want?
Basically, from, from this, from this power line.
You want, say, the hill, and you want fifteen feet here?
Yeah, exactly.
Fifteen feet here?
Yep.
That one?
Yep.
And you want fifteen feet here?
Yes, and that gives us, that basically kind of.
This fifteen from here is gonna give us the solid.
That'll give, exactly.
That'll give us.
That'll, that'll give us a, a solid back based on, you know, a requirement that, uh, that, that's already in the, that's already in the books. And from that, we can basically place the rest of the, the footprint, the envelope. But that's, yeah, that's, that's what I would like, from this line.
Yeah, I think if you place it on, on the pavement, in the corner.
Yeah, I was asking him, I, I. No, I'm just showing you that one, cause if you get in here, I think, you're even getting disturbed, cause you're gonna way back in here. That, so you turn your feet around, and then you're gonna get this dangerous, I think. Kind of.
Yeah, or even like right here. Something in the.
That's fine, but this will, this will give me, this will give me an exact, like, this is like them carrying the back. This is, this is the back line.
I get it, here's my thing. Yeah, I'm gonna give you just that. Who's to say you, you need a distance, so who's to say? Is that all you need, then you're gonna run it off of that?
Off of, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Well, I'd like to get a distance off the lead.
Well.
Of the proposal.
We know, we know, as soon as you have this, right, we know the distance of the lake already is inside the hundred feet. We, like, we know that, all right, and so, we know the farthest back that we can get it, it will be to, to that here. Like, we know that, you know, and so, yeah, that, and so the distance from the lake will be a nice to have. You know, but I, it's already, the assumption is already made that it's gonna be non-conforming at this point. You know, because to get it to form.
Well, it's more than nicely, we need to have.
Yeah, yeah, all right, yep.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So just, uh, C M P stuff?
Based, based on, yeah, based on the C M P line, yeah.
Power line, so that's.
Yep, exactly.
Okay.
That's right, yes. That's, that's my idea, and that's.
Could you, uh, take some better pictures while you're there?
I have tons of pictures.
Yeah, and send them to Jason?
And he has. I have some pictures. But I was just saying. I have pictures?
Is that, is that it then? Keep that for next time, survey?
Yeah.
Is that it?
I think so.
Good?
You wanna see the? Yeah, we can come here.
Thank you.
Uh, new business, Martell Estates LLC, Martell Estates subdivision, final subdivision application, seven sixty Youngsbridge Road, tax map two one seven, lot zero two nine.
Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna be after the skew of government appointment.
Okay.
Thank you.
Uh, Roger, does he use the Hillenhurst, Gavin? I'm flying.
Good evening, planning board members, Brad Jones with Jones Beach Engineers. Here today with, uh, Heidi Martell, uh, who owns the property at seven sixty Youngsbridge Road. Uh, we're here tonight for the final plan review, and, um, we have submitted a new set of plans, uh, the plans themselves have very limited additions to them, um. I'll let you know, we did show all the monumentation, and where we're gonna be using iron pins, and we plotted those, uh, pins, and there were some pins that have already been set, so we, we noted that on the plans, um. The open space, um, I believe that was additional, that's now plotted officially on, on the set of plans. And we also added a floodplain note, uh, to the plans as well. The subdivision, of course, is a, uh, subdivisions will create ten single family house lots, and we serve with, uh, individual septic systems and residential wells. Three of the lots have furnished on Youngsbridge Road, and the other seven remaining lots will have, uh, furnished on the Green Road, two thousand foot road, which is gonna be named, uh, scenic view drive. The other documents that we did submit, um, we've submitted these draft coffees, the Declaration of Covenants and Bylaws, uh, for the Martell Estates Homeowners Association. And so we did just recently submit those, and you should have all that. There is also a letter that came in from the, uh, school superintendent, and that came in on October twenty-fourth. It was submitted to the town and indicated that the development would not impact the school's ability to provide educational services or impact the school capacity, so that's something that's important, that, um, we don't really expect any, or, you know, very, very few children in the subdivision, but anyways, as, uh, we did get that letter from the school system, um, although it was submitted to the, to the town. The, um, uh, during the town act's, uh, floodplanning work process, we did have our public site walk, and had the opportunity for the public to go out onto the site, as well as the planning board, and, um, we've, we're able to have subsequent meetings, and then discuss the subdivision in detail, with the lot layouts, the new road design, and drainage system, and we've gone through know-how that, that's all gonna work, um, so they could move it up, uh, through all that. We have received a remaining D E P slot of permit, and we received that a year ago, November twentieth. Which was exactly a year ago. And, uh, we have submitted a, a plan amendment, um, for the plan revision. The plan revision was basically the fact that we owe that ten percent road, we pulled things in, the D E P did one, two, uh, actually have an official plan amendment, uh, based on our meeting that we had. So I guess tonight, um, we wanted to ask, first of all, see if the board had any questions up until this point.
Do we need something from the dump, or the transfer station?
That's not within our subdivision regulations.
Well, it says that, um, the subdivision won't overwhelm the, the transfer station.
Well, he, he specified that they're gonna have a private trash haul.
To go to the dump.
No, didn't say, didn't say where it was gonna go.
I thought it was going to the.
Well, it would, it would, you know, once the private hauler leaves, he's got an obligation to either go to the town manville, or if he can, if, he doesn't have room, he has to, you know, uh, transport that to another location, so.
Oh, my assumption was it was going to the, the dump, so it's a bad assumption.
I would say that, you know, if they, that would be the ideal location, but it's up to each hauler and how they, you know, dispose it, and they probably wouldn't do that.
If it's a local haul, they have to have a permit from the town, the haul is at the dump anyway, so.
Yeah.
They'll already be on the.
So, just, just to clarify that, there, there wasn't a specific submission requirement to get a letter from the transfer station like there was from the school superintendent, but there is a finding that the board needs to make regarding disposal of solid waste from the subdivision.
That's why I asked the question. But the answer I'm hearing is it's not necessarily going to a dump, it's on the contractor that's gonna pick it up. Is that right?
And it's dependent on the private hauler getting a permit, is that correct, from the town?
If he's gonna use that, right.
He would have to have a, he would have to be a resident of acting to go to the.
Yeah, right.
We did deal with this a little bit on the slot, and I believe we had Casella.
Yeah.
Was the caller, so I'm not sure if.
If it's Casella, they're not gonna be using our transfer.
So they would not, they would not use that, so that, so that is what we dictated for the slot permit back in the day.
First, excuse me, is that for, uh, development, for, uh, for, uh, building material? Are we talking just house, regular household? Anybody real, I know, include me and everybody in the whole neighborhood, most of them are dumpsters, they're all private dumpsters.
The open land, you're gonna post it for residents only, per se?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted, in case, you know, cover your, your tails and everything like that.
So, Chris?
Yeah.
Just a quick question, um, uh, bottom page four, uh, ten dot five, the solid waste, and the finding, these findings are based on a preliminary approval that was granted at the last meeting, this, this application at a public hearing, the first meeting in October, had a preliminary plan approval, the second meeting in October, and the finding that was approved that evening said residents will dispose of solid waste, which includes household rubbish and recycling at the. which includes household rubbish and recycling at the Acton Transfer Facility. The applicant's cover letter indicates that the private hauler will be contracted to serve residents of the subdivision. So should that be amended this evening to just say applicants indicates that a private hauler will be contracted to serve the residents of the subdivision?
Yeah, I think when we go through the findings, it doesn't The first order of business is to make sure it's complete. I have to find out whether submission is complete. All right, mandatory submissions is on 21. We'll just go through them and get it, yea or nay? We got the application form and the submissions checklist?
For the final plan A.
The final plan?
Yeah.
Good?
Yes.
Proposed name. Of the subdivision and the assessors' map and lot numbers.
Yeah.
Yep. Number of acres in the subdivision?
Yes.
Property lines, existing buildings, water courses, and other essential physical features?
Yes.
Indication of the type of sewage disposal to be used?
Yes.
Yes.
Indication of the type of water supply system to be used?
Yes.
Written statement from the fire chief?
Yes.
Waters to be supplied by private wells, evidence of adequate groundwater supply and quality shall be submitted? By a well driller or a hydrogeologist? I think we determined that there's, the information of the surrounding wells was adequate along with the application, the response from the state that said they've, what they've done allows for quantity and quality of the water.
Yeah, I agree.
Date plan was prepared, north point graphic map scale? Names and addresses of the registered owner, applicant, individual, or company who prepared the plan?
Yes.
Location of any zoning boundaries affecting? If different than those submitted with preliminary plan, a copy of any proposed deed restrictions intended to cover all or part of the lots? I don't think there's anything that's different from the
From the preliminary?
From the preliminary. And that's, we just got
Yeah, I get the homeowners documents. It's a draft, of course, at this point.
Location and size of existing and proposed sewers, water mains, culverts, drainage ways on or adjacent to property to be subdivided?
Yes.
Location, names, and present widths of existing and proposed streets, highways, easements, buildings, parks, and other open spaces on or adjacent to the subdivision.
Yes.
Plan shall contain sufficient data to allow the location bearing length of every street, street line, lot line, boundary line to be readily determined and be reproduced upon the ground. And you've marked, you've put those markers in. They'll be tied to reference points previously established. The location bearing length of street lines, lot lines, possible boundary lines shall be certified by professional land surveyor. And it's got the seal. Street plans meet requirements of 1015? It does. With the exception of a drainage. With the location proposed streets or public improvements or open space within the subject property that is shown upon the official map and comprehensive plan or capital improvement program, if any. Right? Okay. I'm looking for a nod. Fossils in, parcels of land proposed to be dedicated to public use and the conditions of such dedication. That's been added. It's not being offered to the municipality, so that part is in A. And we've gotten the homeowners association bylaws now. The draft bylaws. Boundaries of many flood hazard areas and 100-year flood elevation as depicted on the flood insurance rate map shall be delineated. They are location and method of disposal for land clearing and construction debris. Then submissions which shall waiver may be granted. They didn't ask for waivers. Erosion and sedimentation control plan is there. Stormwater management plan is there. The phosphorus impact analysis we saw?
Yep.
The contour lines are there. This looks greater than 25% of the land. So I think it's all there. So we need a motion, right, to say it's complete before we move on?
Yeah, the motion at the bottom of page two is just really about final plan, is the clarification. The preliminary plan was not complete in September.
I'll make a motion, then, that the final plan application for the Martel Estates subdivision is found complete in regard to the requirements in the subdivision ordinance, section 7.2. Mandatory submissions for final plans. But we reserve the right to request additional information in order to determine how the application meets the ordinance performance standards.
Second?
I want to tell you. I'll post.
Do you want this second? After the part that's attracted conclusions?
Yeah, I think if, you know, I wanted to call attention to those three conditions of approval of the preliminary plan. The first was a letter from the superintendent, which has been submitted. The second was regarding the DEP amended permit, which is still in progress. And the third was for the draft homeowners documents, which you do have this evening. So if
Oh, the back together?
Like, I had suggested a couple of conditions of approval under that motion at the top of page three. One is prior to the issuance of building permits, this amended site location permit must be received. And second was prior to the issuance of building permits, the applicant has to submit a draft homeowners association document. I briefly reviewed those documents. They contain a lot of information that go beyond what I was looking for, which was primarily about the maintenance of the road going forward and the maintenance of the stormwater going forward. And those are both part of this document. So I think from that standpoint, that second condition is no longer required.
It addresses the buffers too, maintenance of the buffers?
The mowing.
So at the preliminary, at the meeting in October where the preliminary approval was granted, we went through each finding and read them all and discussed them all. Went through the conclusions, which I had left kind of will or will not, shall or shall not. And we went through all of those. I've taken the liberty, based on that conversation, to complete the conclusions. So to the extent that the board wants to revisit any of these, I think you certainly should. But there's wording in the suggested motion that would say, it basically references the findings and conclusions in the planner memo dated November 14th. So you don't necessarily need to go through them all. But if there's items like that trash disposal point
Yeah, I think we want to
You know, it certainly is often, you have the ability to discuss.
Well, I think we should delete that first sentence in 10.5. Where it says, then we thought it was going to the Acton Transfer Facility. So that should be deleted. And just leave it, the private hauler's going to deal with it.
Whether it goes to the Acton Transfer Station or not?
Yeah, because he would have to have a permit anyways.
Doesn't mean anything to go to the dump.
And I don't know what you meant on 10.6 where you talked about the species of trees and doing a lot of planning, good planning. And the sheet lists the native trees they're going to select from. No one tree can be more than 50%. What additional information were you thinking was required?
Yeah, so when I wrote this as part of the preliminary plan notes, and it certainly still could apply here, is that there are requirements for planting as outlined in that bullet point. I don't know that the applicant has submitted the exact mix of tree species that are on there.
There is a list of trees, species, of which no one can be more than 50%. So as long as it comes from that list, and those are all native, right? Those trees?
Right.
Or no?
That's the fifth bullet on 10.6.
I mean, can you call up that sheet? My point is, I think I'm okay with it. They list native trees, restriction, they think it all in one. That they're going to pick from.
Is that in the notes?
Yes.
Landscape notes?
The ones before. I don't think it was in there.
It's low key. For OVR7.
Sheet six. I'll see sheet five.
Colored, colored letter.
OVR7?
Uh, yep.
They'll plant trees within the Youngs Ridge Road subdivision as shown in the plan, which trees shall be no smaller than three-inch caliper trees. And shall be from three tree species that are native to the state of Maine, including but not limited to American beech, balsam fir, eastern white pine, red maple, sugar maple, black yellow oak, white oak. Provided however, that one tree species may not account for more than 50% of the trees Martel plants within the Youngs Ridge Road subdivision.
So to that extent, I'm fine taking that last sentence out of the bullet point. So that it says currently the applicant should provide information that the species chosen for these plantings that is on the plan set.
Okay.
That's also in the draft homeowners association, paragraph 2.5, listed the trees they got planted. Same ones you listed.
All the trees are planted. We, the plan calls it 82, I got them all, almost doubled. And I got them all going in this spring. That's my intention, it's always was, to serve people who want to take it to another level. But that's my intention, so. And then you got Youngs Ridge, it's nothing to do with this. I'm going to have a total probably close to 500 different trees. The beech I really liked, there's probably six on that property now. There's a real bad disease going around killing it in the beech. Because I tried buying a whole trail, though, and I couldn't get them, you know? But there are certain ones on the property that I had about to come up and inject them. That big, big tree, I opened my first drive into the driveway. That's been there for over 20 years, but I had that all built up. It was expensive, just to save it. But they get all the trees, you know? It's one of my favorite trees, but you just can't get it. And if something changes, comes springtime, I'm going to buy a bunch of them. But right now, I'm just pretty close to double. My boy has got the list, they've been in for two months. As a matter of fact, they just planted another load probably two weeks ago.
That's the only thing I saw in the final, things I saw in the final, finals of things. Are we doing both at the same time? There's a typo on your conclusions of law.
Conclusion, sway down.
Number 17. Should be, do not have a lot depth greater than 5:1, right?
Correct.
Here, cash. I don't have anything else.
So, if, if there isn't anything else, I, I simply recommend that, uh, in referencing, uh, the date of the planner memo on November fourteenth, I would also say as amended at the meeting, November twenty-first.
Want to make a motion, John? Based upon the application and the related documents and information provided by the applicant, the written oral comments of the applicant, reviewing officials and members of the public as reflected in the public record and the findings of fact and conclusions of law in the planner memo dated November fourteenth.
Twenty-first. Oh, sorry.
Number twenty-four.
Dated November fourteenth, two thousand twenty-four, and as amended on the November twenty-first meeting. The planning board finds that the final subdivision plan application satisfies the applicable standards of the subdivision ordinance and therefore approves the application subject to the following condition. The first being, the prior to the issuance of building permits, the applicant must submit an approved amendment to the existing site location permit from the Department of Environmental Protection, consistent with the approved subdivision stormwater plan.
A second. All in favor? All opposed? Cute.
Uh, none of that's yours.
You wanna read the notes?
Cool, awesome.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Have a nice night. Appreciate it. Good night. Happy Thanksgiving.
Penney project, huh?
Uh, so, last time I told you that we had another subdivision coming in, um, we don't, as, it will be the second week in December, um, I think that is on the nineteenth.
Sure.
They told me they were gonna have all the documents in last week, they didn't. Then they said they met with the butters, um, and they're gonna, they have some tweaking they wanted to do, and, uh, they're gonna give me the stuff before the next meeting so you guys can review it. We've also provided that one with North Star for review as well, um, what they had already submitted to me, but there's no application, so I can't really give it to you guys yet, so.
Do we have something to sign for this one?
Speaking of that. They should make sure, I, I would, I wasn't expecting them to have anything to sign tonight. They, I would expect that the condition of approval should be on the, on the plan. So they might need.
They run. That's the ugliest side I've seen in years, is they running.
Careful, I don't know what happened when he went out the door, he might not come back in.
Well, you got a nitro, if you go down, I have a nitro. Are we good? Well.
Yeah.
We did, pulling back in, and we're still on. It goes on that top sheet where we signed, right?
On the, on the, uh, side.
The, yeah, the plan that gets recorded.
Right.
With the, with the register.
Exactly.
Did we decide anything about making changes in, um... Subdivision? But we don't have to go to the, uh, town for that, right? The subdivision? I don't think we could.
Not sure.
I don't think we. Yeah, so, so we're diving into that further. No, I was just asking some three of them.
And we told them, we, provide them with your updated memo or whatever conditions.
Great.
So they can, make sure they get everything right and then come back in to record so that they, next meeting to have it signed.
Yep.
Then, obviously recorded.
Right. The, the one condition would be on the.
Yeah.
Cool. We done?
Tonight, yeah.
Unless we're hanging out a while longer, I mean. Now I gotta go watch the documents. Make a motion that we adjourn Mr. Chinaman.
I'll second that. All in favor? All opposed? Heard, happy Thanksgiving.